Good afternoon, everybody. Relatedly, I think we're all gathered now. Welcome to today's retreat. Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Chair Milliken.
Here.
Vice Chair Davis. Treasurer DeBarty.
DeBarty, here.
Secretary Hatcher.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Landau.
Here.
Trustee McKnight-Morgan.
Here.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
And there's a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The agenda stands approved. Thank you. Vanessa, were there any verbal comments?
No.
No. Um, a deferred maintenance discussion. Vice President Beschi, could you come and tell us what you've been up to? I don't mean to be casual about that.
Good afternoon. We'd like to discuss deferred maintenance and how it relates to our aging campus infrastructure. So I want to begin with an overview of our sanitary system. Up on a map or included in the slides, does everybody have a view of the bypass pumping So just to help get your bearings and give you an overview, at the bottom of the picture, there's a blue box called lift station. In the center, essentially, of community park, we have a lift station that pumps sanitary, our sanitary drain system, up to the northwest corner of our site, right near East Huron River Drive. So you can see that white line that heads up from the lift station to the northwest corner. Everybody have their bearings and can see that. So the way our sanitary system works on campus is all of the buildings flow to this lift station, and then we mechanically pump it up to East Huron River Drive because of the elevation. We're actually lower than the street, and so it doesn't gravity flow. We pump it by means of a lift station. Questions about just how our system works? Okay, so I just want to get a sense of everybody understanding how our system works, where it is. So backing up to Monday, November 7th, we had a section of the pipe fail in this lift station. Water around 4:30 in the afternoon was noticed by members of the facilities department. You can see in that far left photo. And we immediately took action to contain the leak. So we shut down the lift station, contained the leak, brought in equipment that would transport the sanitary water drain from the lift station out to the street, and then Tuesday morning began making an emergency repair. Emergency repair consisted of digging up the asphalt drive that you can see where the water is flowing on and replacing about 25 feet of six-inch sanitary main. As required by EGO, when that spill, leak happened on Monday night, we had to report or fill out a report of discharge with EGO. And as a requirement with that, you're also required to notify within 24 hours the local newspaper and contact the Washtenaw County Health Department.
Can I ask, how old is that pipe?
How old? 54 years old. So it's, we're gonna...
It's our line five.
So it's original to the 1968 campus. So a little bit of background on the problem that occurred on the 7th, the leak, the emergency actions that we took, and what was required by the college in terms of filling out a report, contacting the health department, and notifying the newspaper. A condition of the health department is that we take two samples of our retention pond. So the water you see on that picture, the driveway eventually flows into a stormwater retention pond. We had to take two readings, one at the beginning of the inlet and one at the far discharge point. Those results came back and they were favorable with the health department. Questions up to this point? If not, so let's talk a little bit about our existing system and condition of our sanitary line. So you can see the photo on the right, which has two holes in it. That's our existing, that's a section of pipe that we removed from the roadway and replaced. It's a ductile iron pipe system installed in 1968. It's 54 years old. In some potential scenarios, it could have a useful life of 75 years. In our situation, the pipe is buried 10 feet below ground. It's exposed to moisture. The original installation, we believe, didn't help with the longevity of this pipe. If it was installed today, it would have been wrapped in a liner and sealed. This pipe was not. And it's also exposed to pressure from a lift station. So for a combination of reasons, the service life of our sanitary line has shortened or has reached the point of its useful life. We believe that the condition of the rest of the pipe is exactly what we see here, that the outer casing has rusted away with corrosion. The installation of the original installation back in 1968 did not wrap it and protect it from weather. And it's a lift station, so it's exposed to pressure that helped blew out the side. So that's really the condition of our existing system and where we believe or what we feel is the condition, and that is it's at the end of its service life, and we really do not believe there's much more life left into it. So questions up to this point with our existing system?
Will the quality of the line that we replace this with have more integrity, greater lifespan, improvement in materials over these decades?
We, yes, it will. I mean, the new system, when we do get an engineered permanent solution, most likely will be today's method of constructions, which will encase it in a liner, seal it, and protect it from moisture, which eventually, I mean, it was really the rust and moisture which was the problem that began for the system to fail. Yes, sir?
I just want to put on the table and note that you had briefed me prior to this meeting. This failed not once but twice. So you replaced a section of pipe and another section failed, speaking to the lack of integrity of the entire length of the pipe.
Good point, and you're absolutely correct. And so on October 26th, we had our first leak, which was only 25 feet from this, and the condition of the pipe was similar to what we saw on the 7th. Knowing that the potential useful life is upwards of 75 years old, we weren't quite ready to throw in the towel and go right to the solution we're going to talk about. But once we had the second failure, within two weeks, we were convinced that the entire system is of this condition. So, thank you.
Right. I just want to put that on the table.
So let's talk a little bit about the action plan then. So we have come to the conclusion that our existing system is at its end of its service life. We're very concerned about another failure happening and all the conditions that go along with that. So we have a two-part solution for what we want to do as an action plan. Step one is to immediately install a bypass pump system, which would consist of a couple of pumps sitting right in community garden or the community park, excuse me, right at our current lift station. There would be an eight-inch, heavy-duty, plastic pipe system that would run above ground from the lift station out to a manhole at the northwest corner of our site, right by East Huron River Drive. And that system would essentially be the primary sanitary system until we can do an RFP for an engineering design and get a full-blown, underground, permanent, long-term sanitary system. So we conducted an RFP on Wednesday. We went out and went through an RFP process, reached out to five companies. Unfortunately, none of them replied back. We believe perhaps because of the aggressive timeline, the RFP went out on Wednesday, and we wanted bids in by noon Monday, that companies just couldn't pull their information together. We reached out to a company that we had started to talk to before we sent out the RFP, a company called Rain for Rent. They have provided a proposal. They met yesterday on-site. We walked, we began talking about the specifics and the details required for the system. And with approval, they can begin as early as Thursday putting this system in. So short-term, we would like to move forward with a bypass system, get this up and operating as quickly as possible, take the existing system offline, and then move forward with the process of a RFP for the engineering design to do a permanent in-ground sanitary solution, go through the bidding process and permits, with hopefully an anticipated early spring start on the installation of that system, and within six months have a brand-new permanent system online. Questions?
Question. I think I zoned out here. The bypass pumping, what are you bypassing to? What does that system look like?
So we're gonna, I mean, essentially, it's gonna route, it's gonna run the same...
Are there gonna be pipes above ground that are...
Pipes above ground. I mean, given that this is a temporary solution to get us by, just because we don't believe the current existing sanitary system is going to last, I mean, three weeks, let alone three months.
I see that, for example, this system crosses the service road from the parking lot. So you have to shut down that road?
Correct.
Yeah, two roads.
Correct. So...
Two roads, you're right.
Unfortunately, yeah, the pipe is eight inches in diameter. By the time you were to build a protective speed bump over, it'd be 12 inches high, it would be...
Is the fire department gonna have any issue with this?
We'll work with them. We're not taking a fire lane offline.
Okay. I'm just saying in terms of access, I'm...
We're closing one entrance off of East Huron Drive. The service drive that wraps around the west end will remain open for deliveries. All fire lanes to the buildings will be maintained, so that, I mean, that will really be the primary concern of the fire department.
And how long, I mean, I don't want to hold you to this, but how long do you think this sort of bypass system will have to be in operation before we can get a permanent solution?
We're estimating six months. I mean, it's, I mean, it's gonna take, you know, right now, we're working to get an RFP just to get an engineering design.
Sure.
That design will take a few, you know, I mean, it'll take a month or so. We have permits to secure with the city and the township, go through the bidding process, two trips to the board for approval, you know, so we're estimating it's a six-month.
And don't answer this if it compromises anything, but is there any ballpark estimate as to what you might think this would cost?
For the permanent?
Yeah.
I mean, we're, we wouldn't be surprised if it was $500,000.
Okay, so it won't be seven figures, you don't think?
I'm...
It won't be seven figures. It'll be more like six figures.
We hope it won't be seven figures. So we, we have two things, you know, the immediate bypass system, we have some numbers pulled together. That funding is covered or will come out of our campus repairs and maintenance. We have available funds for that. The long-term solution that we just talked about, the permanent, will come out of our deferred maintenance, and we do have funding available for that.
I'm sure you examined this, but was there no opportunity, instead of going uphill, to go south on the contour here where a pumping station wasn't required and hook into another sewer main to the south of us?
We had, that may, that may come into play with the permanent system. I mean, we could possibly look and see if there is a, if there is an elevation opportunity to go south and run by gravity versus north and pump it. We definitely are lower than the elevation at East Huron River Drive, so that has to be lifted. There's probably at least a 10-foot elevation difference, not favorable to the college. We're lower than the street.
In terms of the jurisdictions we're dealing with, are we, who runs the gravity manhole? If you're, where does, who operates that system?
So that flows into a sanitary main system that goes to the Ann Arbor wastewater treatment plant.
And on the south, is it the same?
I can't answer that. I'm not aware, I'm only aware of what we have on the north that...
Okay. And do they have any input or say into what we do to go into that system?
Well, I mean, at this point, everything that we have, obviously, is approved and designed to flow to the north. So any deviation from that would require support and approval from the city of Ann Arbor.
We would be grandfathered into that approval with any new system.
Perhaps.
We wouldn't have to get this, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out if any of the governmental bodies have to, other than, I suppose Washtenaw County sanitation folks have to weigh into this.
I am not sure. I mean, at this point, we've only really been looking at the existing routing.
Right.
And I still think...
I'm saying even with the existing routing, sometimes when you decide to do something new, governmental bodies decide, well, you're gonna have to open up a new permitting process, and you end up with red tape that we might have to worry about. I'm just wondering if this is gonna open up us to review of the system, because obviously in 1967, those of us who are old enough to remember back then, there was a different system of regulations and environmental restrictions than there are here in 2022. So I'm wondering if there, if we reopen this to review whether there might not be some requirement that we pre-treat the sewage or something, you know what I'm getting at?
Yeah. I would be surprised if there were.
Okay.
I would imagine this time around, when we, when we do a new engineering design, it could possibly come back as a larger system. That's a six-inch main from the lift station.
Yeah, it's, a six-inch main for this campus seems really small.
It, I wouldn't be surprised, you know, but change between 1968 and today is a slightly larger pipe system.
Because I, because I think what you're saying also is that the pressure that's generated by the lift station into a pipe that's six inches in diameter also played a role in why it failed.
I'm convinced of it. Yes.
Is the lift station secure and okay? I mean, is that system working well and will continue to work well?
Most likely, that's gonna be rebuilt as well. So most likely, when we do the long-term solution, permanent, that lift station will be, will get rebuilt.
Okay. But so far, it'll, for a year, it'll work?
Yes.
Yeah.
But I mean, it's our opportunity, I would not be surprised if they come back and add that to the scope that we rebuild that as well. But in terms of, I mean, how the overall campus system works, I mean, that is still the central point for all of the lines on campus to flow to, and that, that, we're not talking about anything upstream of the lift station. It's all from the lift station out to the, out to the road that is in question. Yes.
Another wonderful question. Not to, again, compromise anything you may be thinking about, do we have any other buried surprises from 1968 on the list that you should be thinking about?
Most likely. I mean, our power system.
There are a few bodies under LA.
You know, we're date back to that, parts of it. Certainly, I mean, we're talking about the sanitary, but then there's the, there's the water supply. I mean, there's, you know, besides the waste stream part of it, the whole domestic water system is 54 years old.
Similar PSI in the water system?
Yeah. Well, the water system is under city water pressure. So I mean, you know, it comes in at, it comes in at what the city has for, you know, a water, a water domestic system, which, you know, for, I mean, I think it's around 50 pounds. Usually, you have to boost it up for fire suppression, so we have to usually put a booster pump on for calculations and for water suppression. But this, the city water comes from the water, I mean, it comes from the pressure that they provide, which normally is 50, 60 pounds.
Yep.
I think whoever, lady, yes, sir.
I'm assuming with the above-ground thing, county health department, is that approval secure?
I didn't hear.
Is, would the county health department have to be approved, the above-ground temporary? And have they...
We're talking, we're in the process. I mean, this has all happened very quickly. We really met yesterday with the company to find out what was included and what was not included in their proposal. So we're just starting those conversations. To be honest, we're not sure if there's permits that even apply to this, but we need to ask.
Right.
Yes.
Are the pipes leading from the buildings to the lift station, are those in good shape? The pipes from the buildings to the lift station?
Well...
How do we know how they are?
We were telling, having this company, it's, unfortunately, with underground pipe systems, it's hard to inspect them as opposed to like a bridge. I mean, you know, I mean, bridges, buildings, things that you can see, you can see cracks, you can see movement. I mean, we don't have the luxury of seeing the system.
But one thing we know is they're not pressurized.
But to that, but that is, so everything that flows into the lift station is gravity flow. So it all flows by way of gravity. It's not pressurized, there's not an extra stress put on the system. I did look back through some records. We did have a sanitary repair just outside of the LA building, I think, in 2018. So there have been, from time to time, repairs made. Yes.
Have you set up a timeline yet?
So, so with the action plan, so the number-one thing, this bypass system, the action, the timeline would be, as soon as we get approval to proceed working with this company, they could have the pipe installed as early as this week. Now, what's excluded in their scope and what we're working on is, because this pipe is above ground, it's exposed to the weather, we're moving into the winter, it needs to be winterized, which, which means... Okay, thank you. So in addition to installing this pipe, we need to come back and wrap it with what's called heat trace and then insulation to keep it from freezing. We're working with other companies right now to get that lined up. So, go ahead.
No, you finish up what you had to say, because I have a follow-up on that.
Well, so the timeline, we wouldn't start this system until all of that was in place. I mean, the important thing right now is just to, I mean, try to get a company out, get this system up while there's a window of opportunity on their schedule, take advantage of that. We need to winterize it, which I don't have a timeline on, but I'm hoping it's days, not weeks, to do that, and we still have to have conversations with the city and the township on permits. So, I mean, if everything were to line up, we're hoping a couple, two, three weeks, mid-December.
Okay, then, what is, what's the length of time you think this project would take, seeing how we're going into the winter months?
Give me the full project.
The full project, right.
We're talking about the long-term solution?
Replacement, replacement system.
Yeah, so we're thinking six months. Six months to have a permanent system in place. So this particular option that we're talking about, the bypass, it's a rental. We rent it per month. It's a system, a company that comes in, installs it. We basically pay per month to rent this system, and then when we no longer need it, we call them up, give them one month's notice, and they come out and take it away. So if we were to get a permanent system in sooner, we wouldn't rent this any longer than we needed it.
I just want to follow, go back a little bit about the diameter of the pipe. Is there any way to expand it out? Because those holes look small to me. I don't know. But, so you have to, are you gonna get a larger pipe versus the six-inch?
So the temporary system that we're gonna, that we're talking about putting in just in the next few days, that's gonna be an eight-inch diameter pipe. So that, that's, the system that we have currently is six-inch. We're gonna put an eight-inch. The conversation and what I'm, when we go out and have an engineer design for a permanent system, I would not be surprised if that came back larger than six-inch as well.
But would the eight-inch be enough?
Well, I mean, it has to be engineered, and so they'll look at the volumes, they'll do, I mean, because we pump it, because it's under a, it's a lift station, we pump it, the diameter of the pipe can't be too large, or the system won't work as designed. So it has to be looked at engineering. I'm just, I would not be surprised if the new design came back with a slightly larger diameter pipe size.
Well, it just seems to me, I mean, in 1967 or '68, we had like one building on campus. And since then, we have now grown exponentially, and we've still been using the same little six-inch pipe to...
Right.
But anyway, getting back to my previous question, just, you know, again, this is your business, not mine, but maybe we put on the back agenda here a general inspection of our hydrolurgical infrastructure to see if there are other sleeping problems here that we might want to address proactively. Since my daughter takes ceramics on Tuesday and missed two of her classes and complained each day that the campus was shut down, that her ceramics projects were being delayed, you know, it might be, you know, and again, it was just, I'm joking, but it was obviously a, you know, a surprise to everybody on campus. Here, we're trying to bring people back to campus, and suddenly, we're shutting stuff down again. I just think we want to be proactive here to the greatest extent possible.
A great point, and I will say, when we removed that section of pipe on Tuesday and had two ends of it open, we did scope it. So we did run a scope down. But to your point, yes, we, you know, we will take measures on the preventive maintenance side to try to get into these pipe systems and try to assess the conditions of them.
Cool.
All right, one last question. Did anyone notice that there was an issue before, you know, it actually burst?
No.
He's after two.
Well, I mean, so, we had to...
I mean, don't you, don't you go down and do a maintenance check on them, or not?
No.
It's a long way underground.
Well, don't they have, like you said, he has a scope.
Yeah, they... But you only scope when you got a problem. I just had it at my house. I lost my sewer system, and no one put down a scope until we needed to put down a scope. So...
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, yes.
So I'm drinking coffee, so I'm gonna have to do something with what flows through my body. And it's gonna go into the bathroom here, into sanitary. Where's that going now?
Our system's back online. So just, so everything from the bathrooms in all of the buildings flowed to the lift station. The lift station was repaired, the pipe was repaired on Wednesday.
Okay, so right now, we have a working system?
We have a working system, our existing system.
But before it fails again, we want to get something else in place.
Absolutely, correct. So, yeah, I mean, everything was back online Wednesday afternoon through the existing sanitary system that we just looked at.
Okay, thank you.
On each of the screens we have in front of us, we have a recommendation. It is recommended that the Board of Trustees approve a contract with Rain for Rent in the amount not to exceed $111,663 to install a bypass sanitary drain line until a permanent underground system can be installed. Do I have any support for that motion?
We're gonna add this to the agenda for the regular...
Yeah, don't we have to add this to the agenda?
So this will appear on the agenda for the regular...
Oh, okay.
At 6 o'clock. We want to give you a preview.
So moved. So moved.
Well, we're not doing anything with it.
Well, do we need to vote to put it on the agenda for the next meeting?
No, no, because we're gonna present an agenda with this on there to vote on that agenda at six o'clock.
Oh, okay, we're good.
All right, are there any further questions while we have Mr. Beschi in front of us? David?
So I'm seeing a price on this. But you said we're renting the system, and if, for so much per unit of time, is this a firm price? Like if it takes us an extra month or two to get the permanent system on board?
So this is a not-to-exceed price to rent it for six months. We're, at this point, we don't know if it's gonna be five months or eight. We were anticipating, so if we were to put a new system in in May and only rent this for five, we would not be billed for, they're gonna bill us monthly for the monthly charge. So, if we only use it for five months, we'll only pay for five months.
Trustee Hatcher?
I just add that when I was in Russia in the 90s, all of the water systems and electrical systems in St. Petersburg at least, way up north, were above ground. So when you walked around town, you had to walk over large pipes, which was very inconvenient, except when they broke. It was right there. You didn't have to dig up anything. It's just a different way of looking at it.
Any other questions? Trustee Lando, anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, what shall we do next? Go on our field trip?
Walking tour.
Field, oh, I didn't bring my cane. I'll make it.
With that, all trustees will be driven in golf carts to the bay doors and back of the building.
Can we walk?
Where Dean, Marilyn, and Donna will be waiting. This is our Great Lakes Regional Training Center renovations field trip. Everybody ready?
Which door?
Walk right out, up those doors, right, they're...
I'll never turn out a golf cart.
You can, but it's hilly.
Well, thank you. And with that, we'll adjourn to the field trip and we'll reconvene here as soon as that is concluded. Thank you. Right?
It really does. Coming in to adjourn, is that why we're here?
We're going to adjourn and go into closed session.
Oh, that's right, here.
Like that jog.
Okay, eating and clothes, all right, we can do that. We've done that before.
We have. We're capable of doing two things at once.
Okay. Hydrological, that's... Yeah, I've been getting so many spams on my...
Oh, no.
We're gonna adjourn, we're gonna adjourn and go into closed session, so we're gonna take a vote on the roll call. I'm not adjourned in a closed session.
Well, thank you. We are reassembled. Next on our agenda, we have adjournment of the annual retreat to go into closed session to discuss collective bargaining. Do I hear a motion to adjourn the annual retreat to go into ML 120 for a closed session?
Move that we adjourn to go into closed session.
In support, is there any discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Malkin?
Yes.
Treasurer DeBarty?
DeBarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Lando?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Warden?
Yes.
The retreat stands adjourned. Thank you.